Okay, at 7:00 PM, I will call the Special Board of Alderman Meeting to order on Tuesday, March 31st, 2020, at 7:00 PM here in the City Hall Auditorium. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Lovering, and Alderman, Alderwoman Shoshana Kelly will lead us in the Pledge to the Flag. So, you're muted, we can't hear you.
I can hear her.
I'll begin again. Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We can't hear you.
Larry, I'm muted.
Thank you. We'll get used to this. Not probably anytime soon for me, but we'll get used to it. Before I ask the clerk to take the roll, many of you will be participating by telephone or virtually, and under the terms of the state law that allows you to do that, you'll need to explain why you can't attend, if you can hear us, and who you are with, if anyone. Could you please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Cleaver. Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm here.
Can you explain why you cannot attend, who is with you, and if you can hear the proceedings, please?
I am practicing social distancing. I am by myself, and I can hear everybody.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I am practicing social distancing, and I'm offline and by myself.
Alderman Karen.
Yep, I am here and practicing social distancing, and I am here by myself, and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Clemmons.
I am here, I am participating via telephone, I got home late from work, and I am by myself.
Alderman Lopez.
I'm here, practicing social distancing, and I'm by myself.
Alderman Tenzel.
I am here, I'm the same, practicing social distancing, and I am by myself.
Alderwoman Lou.
I'm here alone, I can hear everyone, and I'm practicing social distancing.
Alderman Jettie.
He's muted.
Alderman Jettie, I believe you're muted.
I'm here, I'm alone, and I'm obeying the advisory to stay at home.
Alderman Schmidt.
I am here with my bird, if you hear a quacking in the background, I apologize. Except for that, I am alone, and I'm practicing social distancing, and I can hear you, thank you.
Alderman Laws.
I'm here, I'm alone, I'm practicing social distancing, and I can hear you.
Alderman Cleaver.
I'm here practicing social discipline and distancing, trying not to be antisocial, I'm here and alone, in my apartment.
Alderman Harriet Gathright. Alderman Wiltshire.
I am here.
Thank you, you are 14.
Thank you. All right, tonight, we have the mayor, and I think the mayor would like to address us before we get into the discussion, so Mayor Donches.
Thank you, Madam President, I wanted to take a moment to update you on the incredible efforts that our city employees and many others throughout the community are making to keep our community members safe and to try to limit the spread of the coronavirus as much as possible. You should be very proud of everyone who works for the city, this has been an incredible group effort, team effort, everyone is working very hard, some people seven days a week, beginning with, of course, public health, Bobby Bagley and our public health nurses. We now have 20, as of last night around this time, and I'm sure we have more now, but we had 28 cases, public health is tracking all of those cases, investigating them, and to identify contacts and try to figure out who might have the virus and to limit contact with those, with those people. So, public health is doing a great job, of course, we've got Justin Kates in emergency management, they, along with the hospitals and others, the CERT volunteers, Community Emergency Response Team volunteers, and our hospitals, police department, fire department have worked on putting together the Alternative Recovery Center, which is located at the high school, there's still some progress that needs to be made there for those who are state reps, there are no clear answers on whether this, what, and exactly what the state's going to pay for, there have been sort of vague commitments, but nothing specific, so we're working on that, but that will be available for the overflow if the hospitals become overburdened with cases, coronavirus cases. Of course, Director Kleiner and everybody in City Hall, Cheryl Linder has been working very hard to put the operation you see together right now, our remote operation, as well as to keep all of the essential functions within city government going, and they've done a great job on that, Ms. Kleiner has headed that up, Ms. Lynn, Cheryl Linder, Ms. Linder has been involved in, is communicating, heading up the team that communicates with the public, so there, everybody there is working very, very hard, and of course, there are many community members who are doing the same thing, the, as you know, the school department is involved in remote learning, and the teachers are very involved there, but our transit system, along with United Way, is delivering meals to, and the soup kitchen is delivering meals to kids every day, kids who might otherwise not have enough to eat, and of course, all of our efforts to reduce the social, to increase, enforce social distancing, as we call it, physical separation between people, and I think we're now seeing scientific proof in the form of a work done by the Kinsa Health, and I could detail it, but I'll just say that is their work in taking temperature readings from thousands and thousands of people across the country demonstrates that the social distancing is reducing the overall level of fever, meaning the overall level of coronavirus and flu, both, so all of the efforts that we're undertaking here really are having an effect, we're definitely going to see more cases grow, and we'll see the numbers grow in Nashville, but not nearly what they would have been if everybody hadn't been working so hard, so that will continue, we have a conference call, multiple conference calls every day on various aspects of what we're doing, everybody, as you know, is working remotely, and again, I want to thank the people who put this meeting together, Bruce Kotignun and everybody from IT, who are enabling us to meet in this fashion, and it's good to see you all, even though it is remotely, I see Alderman O'Brien as smiling as usual, so it's nice to at least have this level of contact. I could go on for, with more detail, but I think you all understand pretty well what's going on, and so I will get to the subject at hand, which is the, the proposed changes to the plan design, which we have put forward in order to encourage people to move to the high deductible plan, and will save both employees and the city considerable money if we, if we undertake this change. I've talked with you, I've talked with you a little bit about the details in the past, but rather than getting into the details now, I will turn it over to Ms. Kleiner and Mr. Budrow, who will fill you in with slides and other information to give you all of the detail regarding what is before you. So, thank you, Madam President, and again, I think everybody should be very proud of our city employees, I didn't mention yet our first responders, fire and police departments, they're both very involved in trying to keep the community safe as well, so again, thanks to everybody, and I will sign off.
Thank you, Mayor, and just know that this board does appreciate everything you're doing, and everyone, all these city employees, so thank you for that. Okay, Director Kleiner and Director Budrow, who's going to be up first?
Good evening, President Wiltshire, members of the board, Director Kim Kleiner, and I am going to be joined by Director Larry Budrow shortly, so we prepared a presentation for you that I believe was delivered to the board via email earlier today, and it's hard for me to tell from here if you can see it or not, so I'll take a nod as yes. So, the first slide here is current challenges, so this slide should not be new to the board, this was actually a slide that was shared with you back in December, and we wanted to show you the actual spend when we talk about benefits for city employees, because quite often, we hear and we think about healthcare and what our healthcare claims costing, but to have a rich benefits program like the city offers to its employees, it's much more than just health claims, this spend, as you look at it, and you look at the increase over several years, really relates to the whole fund, so there's cost to having benefit employees who administer the plan, there's cost for our stop loss, there's cost for the dental, which we often don't talk about, as much as we talk about Anthem and the medical claims, there's all types of costs, so this is inclusive of all of that, which is different than just looking at healthcare claims. The next slide we wanted to show wasn't an internal exercise that we did in turn, so last fall, the mayor had asked us, how do we know that the HSA is saving the city money? And it's a fair question, we put it out to WBS, our healthcare consultant, they prepared an analysis, which you'll see in a couple slides down, but we went back and we studied the data here as well, and when I say we, there has been a group of us that have been involved in preparing this recommendation for the mayor, it's been human resources and our benefits team, it has been several members from financial services, including CFO Griffin, it has been certainly Mr. Budrow and all of WBS team, so we looked at these claims, and we looked at our average claims by employee per plan, and that's what you see here, and this is fiscal '19 claims, what WBS had come back and indicated to us was that if the city saw all of our subscribers move to the high deductible health plan, we would save an estimated $6.8 million. So, we went back and did this type of exercise, if you move to the next slide in fiscal '20, you'll see that this year we had 2,136 subscribers, 745 of those are single, 519 are two-person, and 872 are family, the family and the single subscribers are fairly balanced throughout the city. But what this does prove to us is that WBS's research, not that we didn't believe it to be true, they've been spot-on on most everything they have delivered to the city over the years, but it did prove to us that $6.8 million figure, if all of our employees converted from the HMO and the POS to the high deductible health plan. So, the next slide is the actual data that we received from WBS last fall, and I want to note a couple of things here, this was early last fall, so the claims had only been approximately two to three months in, and you see a large fluctuation when you look at our health claim. Right now, Anthem has done a shift in reporting, so it used to be that they reported the claim as the claim came in, excuse me, they reported it as it was paid, and now they're trying to report it as it, as the claims are received by them, right now, we only have claims data through the end of February, even though they have been receiving claims through the end of March. This shows that the high deductible health claim costs for the city have actually decreased 21% since fiscal '17, or 7%, 7.6% annually, where the HMO costs have increased 24% since fiscal '17, or 7.4% annually, the expected difference between the HMO and the HSA plan is approximately 15%, and the current actual claim differential is about 31%. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Budrow for a few minutes.
Thank you, Kim, may I have the next slide, please? Health maintenance organizations, or HMOs, came into being in the early 1980s, they followed the historical health insurance was, which was known as indemnity plans, in which you would go to the doctor, and you would pay a portion, say 20%, and the healthcare plan would pay the rest. HMOs were marketed, HMOs were marketed in the early 1980s as providing managed care, the thought being that the patient would have a primary care provider who would direct that to patients' care through the medical care system, and therefore do so more efficient, efficiently. The trouble became, over the next 40 years, that the HMOs were so convenient, you go to the doctor, pay the $20 copay, do what the doctor says, the doctors are certainly most interested in their patients' care, but they were not necessarily most interested in economizing healthcare. HMO members are really unaware of their claims cost in New Hampshire, there's no EOBs provided, and they pay $20 copay for most services. An HSA, what we refer to as the HSA, is known as a consumer-driven, high deductible health plan with a health savings account, it's a type of plan that is endorsed by the IRS, you have to have a high deductible health plan in order to have a health savings account. The mechanism here is different, every time a patient goes and receives medical service, they do get an EOB, and the awareness of that claims cost, and the fact that there is a deductible that has to be paid, just fosters a natural interest in consumer involvement. So, the concept between high deductible health plans is that it is bringing some elements of consumerism back into healthcare. The health savings account is a tax-free savings plan, it is, I read a description today that said it's taxed, it's not taxed when you take it from your pay, it's not taxed when it is invested, it's not taxed when you spend it, the balance carries over from one year to the next, so unlike the earlier flexible spending accounts, this keeps growing and growing, growing, it is portable at retirement or resignation, that means that when an employee leaves an organization with an HSA, that money is theirs, that account is theirs. In addition to health claims, the tax-free funds may be used to pay other qualified medical expenses. Mayor Donches, in an earlier message about this plan, mentioned that someone in the city had said, gee, I've accumulated a fair amount of money, and that's possible for a number of people who are able to contribute up to the maximum, as much as the maximum if they like, and who don't spend all that money every year, and that can be a terrific advantage to people, because you can carry on beyond retirement to continue to fund healthcare. May I have the next slide, please? Not exclusive to the high deductible health plan, but also available for HMO participants, Smart Shopper is one of the consumer involvement tools that we introduced in July 1st, and this slide simply is a report to show you that we are progressing better than Smart Shopper would have expected, so the activation rate, that is the number of the employees who have opened up the Smart Shopper app and logged in, is 10% versus an expectation based on their book of business of 3% at this point, and similarly, the activated shopping rate, those people who've gone beyond just logging in, but actually shopped, or a procedure or a test, is 68%, comparing favorably to the 47% that they would have expected, and the shop conversion rate, or their term for, meaning those people who actually shopped, used the program and got an incentive, was 26%, well ahead of the 8%. So, the total grace, gross savings thus far is $28,000, members have received $3,100 in incentives, and so that netted to $25,000 of savings. We have viewed Manchester's history with Smart Shopper, they had done it for a number of years before us, and it grew slowly and steadily, and built and built over the years, so we are encouraged about the future of this product. The next slide, please. These three bullet points are really the three changes to the, that are proposed to be made to the current HMO, what we propose is that this July 1st, the $20 copay is increased to $25, the $250 or $500 two-person and family inpatient and outpatient deductible is increased to $1,500 and $3,000, that's a substantial increase, we're well aware of that, and pharmacy copays would increase from $515.35, that's for 30-day supply at a pharmacy, or $5370 for 90-day mail-order supply, to $10.30 and 50, 20, 60, and 100, the three levels refer to tiers of prescriptions, so generic, brand name, specialty drugs. May I have the next slide? Until now, we've had the health savings account planned for a number of years, but the contribution that the city makes, which is $1,500 for an individual member, or $3,000 for two-person or family, has never been committed to in writing, so to speak, it's been our practice since we launched these plans, but as we were considering this change, it became apparent that people were concerned that this was not memorialized, and so, for the first time, and we would expect and have openly spoken to unions already, if we, if this continues to roll forward, we would, at the same time, we ask for plan design change in the HMO, also volunteer to memorialize these contributions to the high deductible health plan, so the, the contribution is $1,503,000, and the high deductible is $2,000 and $4,000. Effective in July, with this change, if it's approved, our contribution will be distributed in two installments, one on or about July 1, and one on or about October 1. However, we have another slide to discuss in a moment about some of the discussion that we've had with employees about this change, and one remark, when one concern that was brought forward in the mayor's meeting on March 12th was, rang home to us, and so what we said was that we'll, we'll do that, if you have the $3,000 contribution, we'll give you $1,500 on July 1, and we intend to give you the second $1,500 on October, but if you experience the need to spend more than that prior to October 1, just tell us that, and we'll contribute the remaining 15%. When I say just tell us, we would probably ask for some record, but it would not be invasive medical information, it would just be a record that said they had exceeded the $1,500, and we think that is an important improvement that we've made. May I have the next slide? Is this my slide, Kim?
No, thank you, Director Budrow, I'll take this slide, so we understand, and we are very sensitive to the cost that is incurred by our employees, and as I stated earlier, back on slides two and three, the breakdown of our employees between the single, two-person, and family plan is somewhat balanced, so in order to give you an analysis tonight, we just took the most common plan, which happens to be the family plan, and we thought we could discuss this and break this out a little easy, or for everyone to understand, so the cost right now in fiscal '20 for a family plan is approximately $30,590, 80% of which is bared by the city, for $24,000, roughly $472, the employee pays annually $6,118.20. With the fiscal '21, the employee cost would change, so what happens when you have plan redesign is, as deductibles are raised, the cost of the plan decreases, so in this plan, for the HMO plan, if we were to accept the redesign, there would be about a 15% reduction from the $6,118 in cost to $5,181.36 annually, so roughly, that's about a savings of $936.84. Now, I want to be careful when we talk about the inpatient and outpatient exposure, because this is a deductible, and an employee is only going to incur this if they have an inpatient experience with being hospitalized, or an outpatient surgery, whether that be a day at the hospital, or whether it be at a surgical care center, and I reached out because I wanted to have some And I reached out because I wanted to have something to put it in perspective. So I reached out to WBS earlier today. And I asked them if they could tell us what percentage of our HMO and POS population had an inpatient claim. And they responded very quickly, as they always do after doing research. They said in fiscal '19, only 5% of that population had a hospitalization claim. What they couldn't nail down for me in the short amount of time was how many of those employees had an outpatient. That requires a little bit more detail. But they did note that in fiscal '20 to date, and that is, like I said earlier, only paid claims through the end of February. We've only had 2% that have had an inpatient hospitalization. So I think that, that provides a little bit more of an, of our perspective on who, what percentage of the population might incur that $3,000 deductible. If an employee was to take their new cost and they did have an inpatient experience, would the savings that they're saving in the premiums, their exposure after that premium change would be roughly $2,000? Plus any routine co-pays. Now we want to know again, preventative care is always free. That does not fit into this model. If you are having an annual exam, whether it's on the HMO or the HSA, preventative care isn't, is free. That is 100% covered. So move over to the HSA, which is what we are, we are encouraging our employees to do. And let's look at that for a minute. So if you go from the current HMO plan to the new, well, it's our existing HSA, but it hasn't been memorialized in our literature before as far as the merit plan. If we look at that, it's a 19% savings annually from $6,118 to $5,274. Again, the city gives you $3,000 for a family, which is contributed to your health savings account. There's a $4,000 deductible. So the employee's exposure after the city has contributed the $3,000 is $1,000. But let's look at that savings that they're getting from moving over from the HMO, which is another $843. That exposure now is $156. True, again, we want to, there's other costs. If you were to go to the doctors during the year, all you're going to incur after that, because of the $4,000 deductible is $1,000 less the savings for 156. So while we realize we are changing that HMO plan, it is not to shift, shift the healthcare costs onto employees, but it is to encourage the employees to enroll in the high deductible health plan because we do believe it is the most cost-effective plan and it offers the same quality of healthcare that our employees deserve. Next slide and back to Mr. Budra.
Thank you, Kim. We're talking about making a change that would only affect the unaffiliated employees on July 1st. That's about 135 people. We do know that the conversation is already being broached at at least one negotiating table this spring. Relative to ensuring that employees had some opportunity to understand what we're seeking to do, we invited all employees to have a meeting with Mayor Donches and that, that invitation went out on March 9. We also on March 9th, aware of the piece of the merit ordinance, National Revised Ordinance 50-3 amendments, requires that any changes being presented to the board by the mayor to the unaffiliated plan should be discussed with city directors and department heads and providing them a specific opportunity for a comment. We accomplished that by inviting them to an open house in room 208 with myself, Larry Budra and Kim Kleiner. And we dropped down to the bottom of the slide for, for a moment. Two people stopped by and asked a couple of questions and we felt that their inquiries were successfully responded to. On March 12th, on, earlier that afternoon before the open house, Mayor Donches led a meeting and spoke at some length explaining the pressures on this year's budget and the pressures that healthcare costs have been adding to the budget, particularly in the last couple of years with about $6.3 million increase to cost over two years, I believe. And let people know that he intended to submit this legislation to change the, primarily the deductibles and the health maintenance organization. That's obviously a big change. Not, as Ms. Kleiner just said, not as an effort to impose those deductibles on people, which do shift costs, but rather to encourage them to move en masse to the health savings account plan. And that meeting also was, was cordial and a couple of questions were asked. And as I had mentioned earlier, one of the questions led directly to a change in the proposal before it was finalized. Thank you, Kim. Next slide, please.
So a number of years back, 2014 Governance Magazine had actually done a study. It's not, certainly not the only study that has been out there. You know, healthcare challenges, the cost of healthcare is a challenge both in municipalities and in private industry. There's been a number of studies, but Governance Magazine's study was specifically around municipalities and how do we look at these increasing costs of healthcare? And they went through a number of steps. We did review that. We realized that plan design by itself is not going to solve our healthcare cost problem. It takes many measures to make that happen and it can't be done in a one-year period. This is a process that the city has to embark on. And we need the employees and the employer boards and everyone to buy into this. But these are some additional measures that we started back in the fall. So WBS Workplace Benefit Solutions, our healthcare consultant, has been extremely helpful and has been out to our divisions, public health, public works. They've also gone to the teachers' union and had sessions at City Hall talking to people about healthcare costs and how they can manage healthcare costs and, and how we should look at that and how it benefits everyone, both our employees and the employer, walking them through the high deductible health plan and the health savings account. Employee education is a very large piece to this, solving this problem. And we continue to, we will continue to work with Workplace Benefit Solutions on further education, on some creative videos. We've been having conversations with the school district on ways that we can engage their workforce, which is more difficult when you have 17 schools throughout a district. But we are very devoted to building our employee education. Wellness and alternative resource, so, resources. So we're going to continue to look at options that Anthem has as well as to, tools that Workplace Benefit Solution has in their wheelset, whether it's things like telehealth, which right now is waiving all costs to our subscribers during the next three months because of the COVID-19 event. Whether it's Smart Shopper or Sydney Care or our employee assistance program. We're going to look at new and creative ways and do as, offer as many programs as we can to benefit our employees. Another solution that was highlighted was doing a dependent care audit. And this is important. We realize that at day-to-day, as you're doing open enrollments and you're busy, employees may forget that to either inform us when a divorce takes place or to remove a child that's no longer a dependent. One thing we do have in place with Anthem is they do automatically alert as our dependents are about to hit the 26-year-old cutoff. So we, we feel we're very good on that. We have very good control system put in place. But we are committed to do a full dependent audit next year during fiscal '21. Data upgrades. We just signed a contract with a consultant, ClearSky. They're working with our information technology department to build data feeds that will update between our Lawson HR system and the Anthem system. Currently, there's a lot of transfer of benefit information that's still manually done. And we're looking to improve, improve that efficiency and productivity. And we hope to have these data feeds built in time for open enrollment this year. The last measure that we've put in place as of November of last year is our CBA strategy team. So this is, consists of members from our employer boards as well as members from city management. And last November, we started discussing health and wages. We started looking at how we strategically develop uniformed language and proposals for all of our union contracts. I have to say that everyone has been very engaged. We've had good conversations. We do believe that taking this team forward will build a very positive relationship between not only our city management and our employer boards, but just in how the city delivers, not wages and health benefits to our employees. So we wanted to let you know that while we're, tonight, we're talking about plan design. There's a lot of other things that we have and that we're actively working on.
May I have the next slide, please? Oh, thank you. Before I just rattle this off, I'd like to let you know that I come to this subject with quite a bit of experience, actually. I have been a human resources director for over 30 years, 15 years in public sector and 15 years in private. I, I also have had a high deductible health plan myself for about 12 years now, and I would not have it any other way. And so when I come to this decision, it is both with the responsibility to the city, fiduciary responsibility to the city to try to provide employee benefits as cost-effectively as we can. And also from the perspective of a user of a high deductible health plan, knowing that it's been the, the best deal I ever could have had. Great health insurance, great coverage, and the opportunity for me to amass enough tax-free savings that as I have aged and needed new glasses and dental work and hearing aids, those thousands and thousands of dollars that I was able to achieve on a tax-free savings. So I, I urge you genuinely, along with Mayor Donches and Administrative Services Director Kim Kleiner, we urge the Board of Alderman to pass this ordinance this evening. Thank you, and Kim and I are available for questions.
Thank you, Director Kleiner and Director Budra. Appreciate your, your efforts in this and the presentation this evening. I will open it up to the board for questions. Anyone have questions? Alderman Tenzel.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Just a couple of questions, just to clarify, I think, to make sure I understand correctly about the, first about the HSA plan. In the out-of-pocket maximums per year that Director Kleiner was talking about, the, the $4,000 deductible, that is per household and not per individual per household?
That is correct.
Okay. So their, their exposure for a whole family or an individual is $1,000?
$4,000.
$4,000, yes. But with the, with the $3,000 HSA plan, it would only be $1,000 out of their pocket?
Correct.
And if I may, just a, another question. I know we had, we had talked about this dependent audit. And one of the very important points in the study was that there are no penalties for, for anybody, any employee who had knowingly or unknowingly carried a dependent past when they, when they should have. I would hope and I would expect that that's going to be a part of any process that the city undertakes next year in, in looking at as to who is, if we may be covering dependents that we don't necessarily, that we shouldn't be covering. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. If I could just say one, one more thing, Madam President?
Yes.
Thank you. And so I, so I too, I had, I had healthcare through the county, through government, through employer-sponsored healthcare for a long time. And have more recently been in high deductible plans for myself and my family. I just wanted to share for, for the board or for anybody who's listening. I went back and I, I looked at what our healthcare costs were for the last couple of years. And so we're lucky that we're, we're a family of four and we're all relatively healthy. But you know, my kids have strep throat more than I think is humanly possible every year. And we have all of our usual trips to the doctors. So I went back and I looked at, in 2018, our out-of-pocket expenses for healthcare was a little over $1,500. And then in 2019, our out-of-pocket expenses were a little under $1,200. And to me, the takeaway from that is if I was in the city's high deductible HSA plan and $3,000 a year was being put into an account for, for my family, at the beginning of the third year, we would have about $6,300 in that health savings account that we could use for various health costs. And you know, God willing, things kept going well, we remained healthy. That would just continue to grow. But even if it didn't continue to grow, we would be covered for, for six years without having to pay any out-of-pocket expenses for, for healthcare through the city. So I know we're here tonight to talk about the, the piece of legislation that's being proposed. But you know, I think when Mr. Budra, Director Budra and Director Kleiner talk about this HSA plan and it being a good option for people, I, I, I believe that they're being genuine and honest about that. And I hope that employees will take a second look at that if they have already. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Tenzel. I just want to say for the record that Alderman Gathright did join us at about 7:15 this evening. Okay, Alderman Lopez?
And Linda.
And Linda.
So I have a question for Director Boudrea, if I can?
You can.
Given the fact that we're in the middle of a pandemic, which is specific to respiratory issues, and that this plan also would increase the deductible rate for hospital treatments, is there, are you aware of any stimulus packages that might provide relief for COVID-19-related medical treatment?
Director Boudrea?
Yes, thank you, President. No, I'm not, Alderman Lopez. I do know that the couple of emergency legislation acts in both the state and the federal government have actually imposed some mandates that insurance plans provide costs without co-pay for COVID-19 testing and initial evaluation appointments, but I have not seen any indication that anyone is going to help reimburse us for those.
Okay. Well, we know an answer I would have liked to hear.
Y'all set, Alderman Lopez? Thank you. Alderman Kelly?
Did Linda want to speak? I didn't want to take her turn. I know she maybe said something, but she's not on video.
I'll recognize her after you speak.
Okay. Just making sure. So I had a question, if I could ask, potentially for Ms. Kleiner or Ms. Boudrea, but Mr. Boudrea. My question is around employees and education. It seems like you guys have done a great job of holding a number of meetings, but I'm wondering if for the record, you could talk a little bit about maybe some of the most frequently asked questions in terms of switching plan. And I know that we also, as a family, just switched to the high deductible plan, and I personally had a lot of questions. So if they could answer, that would be great.
Ms. Kleiner and I can't see each other to give cues. Well, actually, the biggest question that we heard in Nashville, the number one question that we're seeking to resolve was because the contribution of $3,000 to the $4,000 deductible had not been codified or codified anywhere. People repeatedly ask, this plan sounds great, but what assurance do we have that the city won't change that? And that actually was the biggest question. There are other questions as to how it works, and in all honesty, it is more of a hassle than having an HMO plan. In fact, that's the reason that some people may choose to pay more for health insurance as we go forward, because no EOBs, $20 when you go to the doctor, and this does require getting an EOB, taking a look at how much the insurer paid, and then paying the balance bill during that first $4,000 if you're a family. So questions about mechanics and questions about assurance that the city would continue to foot the $3,000 are the two that come to mind the most.
President Wiltshire, if I could add to that?
Director Kleiner?
So many of our employees have questions surrounding the actual mechanics of it. So like Director Boudrea said, it actually, it requires you to do a little finance, so to speak, and to investigate those health claim costs, to actually watch and make payments on things that you're not normally used to making if you've been a part of an HMO. Several years ago, my, the private company that I worked for instituted the Health Savings Account, and a few of us were trained on it so that we could help other employees walk through that process. The Police Department has done excellent job. They actually have a couple officers that are going around and providing that type of training to their other officers. We can offer that same training right here because we have our wonderful benefits people down at the first floor, and they're fully versed in it. But it's just that education piece and building it, and people catch on, and most of them love the plan.
If I could respond, please?
Alderman Kelly?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Kleiner, I really like that idea of having people who are almost ambassadors to the plan, so I would love to see us implement that. Everyone knows that, you know, HR person can tell you, but when a friend sits down and says, hey, this is what I did, this is how I did it, it can be pretty powerful in helping people to make that shift.
Alderman Gathright?
Currently, how many employees do we have in the city today?
We have, the school has about 2,000, the city has about 850.
I'm sorry, school has what?
The school district employs around 2,000 people, and the city employs around 850.
Oh, so, okay. So we're round off the 3,000 people. So, but what we're talking about today is 135 people? Am I correct?
Yes. We're starting with one group.
Okay. I know that when we, a while back, when Director Kleiner talked about this process, it was going out to all city employees. Am I correct? I'm just curious, at this point, have we had others to come aboard?
May I address that, Ms. Kleiner?
Please.
Well, most of the employees for the city and the school district belong to unions.
Yeah.
And the union contracts specify the insurance coverage, that they describe the plan design of the current HMO. And so the unaffiliated or the non-union employees are our starting point.
President Wiltshire, can I have another question?
Alderman Gathright?
Okay. So, all right, so our starting point is with the affiliates. I think for me, where I'm struggling with this, because I think our starting point should have been with the unions, because even if we pass this tonight and the union says no, where is the savings?
President Wiltshire?
Director Kleiner?
So whenever we institute healthcare changes in our city, because we do have 17 unions, we have to start somewhere.
Yeah.
And, you know, we can always say, well, we should have started with negotiating with this group, or we should have started with that group. You have to deal with the groups that are heading, have contracts that are expiring. And that's where you have to start, because you have to start at the beginning of the We do know that each group, as they come on, will save the city money. I mean, as we see people shift over to the HSA, there will be savings. That is not to say that we can't engage in having employees shift during every open enrollment from the HMO to the HSA without any plan redesign. But what we do know is that you have to start with some group, the unaffiliated, of course, doesn't have a contract that expires. It's managed between, you know, the mayor and the Board of Aldermen. And that's where we decided there is other conversations that are happening, and we'll deal with that through the CBA Strategy Team, and we'll have active conversations with our 17 other different unions.
Can I answer that further? Can I answer Alderman Gathright's question a little bit more? First of all, there is a group of unionized employees who seems likely now to agree to this change, and there is, there are a number of factors that will be included in the, that would be included in the agreement, but it seems like that will probably happen. Number two, oftentimes, changes we make with the unaffiliateds occur first, and when we change, or by themselves, or only to the unaffiliateds, and those aren't necessarily, those are often very favorable things. For example, the last time we revised the ordinance governing affiliated employees, we raised the pay scales, we increased the number of steps, we raised the steps, and a number of people benefited very substantially from that. And this was not anything that was available to other employee groups. So we, in the past, have done a lot for affiliated employees. Number three, this will mean that whoever gets in on this, their weekly contributions will go down significantly. So if this were, you know, if this becomes effective for July 1 for the unaffiliated employees, the amount that the unaffiliated employee will have to give into the, into the city will be reduced by, we think, around 15%. So that's, you know, say $50 a week on a family plan. It could be that, maybe even a little more. So they will save money along with the city. It's not just the city that's saving money. The vast majority of affiliated employees will actually see a weekly benefit out of this. And I think that's why we didn't really get many questions. I mean, people are thinking, well, I'm now paying 350, maybe I'll only pay 300 starting July 1. That sounds pretty good. So I think that we're, so the bottom line of all three points is, I don't think we're being, and I think the point of your question, is that I don't think we're being unfair to this group of employees. I think we've done very well by them in the past, and I, and this doesn't really, isn't really a disadvantage, it's just a realignment of the plan where people, including the employees, will do better.
Alderman Gathright? Thank you. All right. Let me just say this, that I hear what you're saying, but what you're saying is not the truth of unaffiliates. And I'm going to say that, okay? Last year, when you made the change, and I was against that change of some of the things that were happening with the unaffiliates, okay? I have a background from Verizon for 25 years, 35 years, take it back, okay? And as management, as well as management in the union, I know the difference. So what I'm saying to you is that when I asked a question about the muddies, that's what it's about, the muddies, who's paying what, and no disrespect to Alderman Tenza, but it depends on the families involved. It really depends on the family involved. If your family is fairly healthy, and guess what, usually if you had a certain pay scale, your family is. But if your family's not at a certain pay scale, your family's not. So when you make those types of changes as to who can afford to pay for medical care, it makes a difference. And that is my point. I feel that you got 135 employees, okay, that you're asking to do this, and they probably will do it not because they think that's the best for their family, but because they want to keep their jobs. That's a reality here. And I know that you know that. And I'm sorry if I'm getting upset about it, because I'm tired of this game that we play, literally play. If you are fairly healthy, and even at my age, I'm fairly healthy, and I have certain insurance through Verizon, very good insurance, but when I look at people that don't have what I have, even insurance-wise, it's a whole different ballgame for those people. And I think if you would really, really, I know that you had a meeting, I know that Kim had a meeting, and Director Boudrea, I'm sorry, Director Kim, all of you guys had meetings with these folks, but do you truly believe that they were going to tell you what they really felt? And that's where I'm struggling with this. I feel as though any employee in this city should be able to talk and be honest about how they feel about what's happening with them.
Well, they wouldn't, you know, we ask, we wouldn't, if someone disagreed with this, I mean, you know, there's no repercussions to that.
Yeah.
Now, these are all fairly well-paid employees. These are not hourly workers. I mean, these are, these are middle-management and up. These aren't the people down, you know, doing automobile registrations. These are people that make probably low end, probably about 60, up to $120,000 or $130,000 a piece. So these are not your hourly workers.
$120,000 to $160,000 a year, is that what you're saying?
I think, I mean, Ms. Kleiner or Mr. Boudrea can correct me, but I think on the low end, these employees make in the 60s. And on the high end, some of the, the high end, as high as in the 120s. So these, and a lot of people over in six figures. So these are not poorly paid, you know, workers who are, you know, giving a huge amount out of their paycheck to healthcare. These are employees that, at least on the, you know, within the city universe, are relatively well-paid.
Okay. Can I respond?
Alderman Gathright?
If you tell me that somebody's making $60,000 a year, and they have a family, they live in Nashville, and they're paying rent, you're telling me they're doing okay? Literally?
I guess I'm telling you that if they can save $50 a week on healthcare, that helps them.
Okay. Well, I will just stop at this point, because I see where we're going. I am against this, and I will not go for it.
You all set, Alderman Gathright?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak? Alderman Dowd?
I have just a couple of questions, and I'll ask just one at a time. So first of all, I could be wrong, but I think there are already some people in the other unions that are already on the high deductible. In fact, I may be wrong, but I think that half the fire departments on the high deductible. Is that correct?
May I respond?
That is correct.
So it's correct? All right, thank you. So it's not just this 135 people that are going to be in the high deductible. We've already had people start to change. So one of the questions I had from some of the non-affiliateds is, why are we paying them twice a year rather than putting all the money in July 1? And they're also concerned that, okay, now that's two times, it could change to three times. And they're concerned about what documentation they're going, if they, like we said, we'd pay them more if they ran out, but they're afraid that they're going to have to provide serious documentation, and it's going to take time, and it, that's the one portion that I would be okay with if we say it's a simple form and it happens quickly, and then out on a limb with payments. And also, the other part of the question is, don't we, as a city, keep track of every employee's use of the funds, and don't we know when they're getting close?
Director Boudrea?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Dowd. You may have to remind me of a couple of the questions, but to actually go, to start and go backwards, no, the city does not track the claims activity of employees. So we don't, we don't have that information in our system. We do get weekly bills, but they are only segregated between the school and the city. The purpose for splitting the contribution into two segments is that on occasion, it doesn't happen a lot, but on occasion, someone will come and join the city, and we'll pay them $3,000 on July 1, and then they won't stay very long. And it just, it creates, well, two problems. One is, it just makes you feel that you've been taken advantage of, and so that's not a comfortable feeling. The other is, and I can't speak eloquently on it right now, but you have to be in a high-deductible health plan in order to have so much money in a health savings account. And if someone goes in and just doesn't stay for very long, and they leave, and we've given them $3,000, we may have exceeded the IRS limitation. Earlier, you had said, and I think I may have missed part of your question, but to confirm a couple of points that you made, yes, we have been marketing, and this has been growing very successfully. We picked up over a couple of hundred people last year. We're now at 675 employees enrolled throughout the organization, throughout the city and the school, and obviously, most of those are unionized employees, because most of our employees are. The fire department does have the highest percentage of people enrolled as, as that group, and we believe that's because they have the opportunity at the fire stations to discuss these things. And we've seen now, every new employee, the firehouse, they come back, and when, and when they sign their benefits work, they're joining the high-deductible plan, because their colleagues are imploring, or not imploring, but recommending that they do. And in the police department, there's a, there's a craze going on. It feels like they're highly enthusiastic, and I believe that regardless of this legislation, and somewhat regardless of what happens with unions, they're getting it. These plans cost everybody less money. And so, there, I think we're gonna see a surge on July 1 this year, just because of all this discussion. And if I've missed something, and you wanna catch me while I'm still off mute, please do.
I think you've, you've caught most of it. I have heard from some of the people in the education department, and they seem to think that the sales pitch to the teachers and staff has not been significant enough to convince them to change. So, I'm not sure how we address that, and give them more presentations, or, you know, I think part of it is a trust factor. They want to make sure that everything is ironclad, and they're very, people are very issued with changes, as we found out with all the stuff going on lately. So, I think, once you get more and more people on, you may get, it'll, it'll snowball. A question related to that is, Manchester's health insurance costs have only gone up 2% a year. Is that because they're so far ahead of us? Nobody wants that question?
No, I'll be happy to. So, W, Workplace Benefit Solutions does work with the city of Manchester, and they have been actively moving people to the high-deductible health plan for over four years now. So, are they ahead of us? Yes, they're, they're ahead of us. Most of their school population is on the high-deductible health plan. They've certainly seen some benefit in savings from that. We, you know, when we had Tom DeLacy from WBS go over and meet with the union leadership, I think they were working on some ways that they could further address teachers, you know, through their team leads and the union leadership, and that might create that trust that you were just speaking of, Alderman Dowd. But, yes, the city of Manchester has, has realized savings embarking on this type of course.
Okay, my last question. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Budrow.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I recalled that one of your concern that had been expressed to you was people wondering about how difficult it would be to access the second half of the contribution, if necessary. And I, this is my most recent EOB, I received it earlier this week, and on the bottom of it, it's, it tells me how much of my deductible I've reached. And our plan is to make this very simple, and just show us a copy of that, that shows that you exceeded the $1,500 in your deductible spending thus far. It doesn't have provider, it does have a little, little provider information, but I can block it with one finger. That's not our interest. Just show evidence that you exceeded the $1,500, and we'll pay the second half.
Okay. My, my last question is, I looked at the slope of the, one of the first charts you had, Mrs. Kleiner, and that insurance growth is, is, if it keeps going, it's going to take a significant chunk of our budget, and we won't have increases for anything else. So, not only do we have to work to lower that number, but I'm just wondering whether we need to take a one-time hit and say, "We need a new baseline to work from." Otherwise, we're never gonna get there with a budget.
Director Kleiner, did you want to respond?
Well, I certainly couldn't have said it better than Alderman Dowd. It cannot continue. We can't continue on the course we're on. I do believe that with the processes that we are putting in place, all the additional measures, as well as moving everyone over to the HSA, even though it may take time to negotiate these into contracts, we can still move people on annual enrollment. I mean, we can still do it through employee education while we're negotiating contracts. WBS estimated $6.8 million savings, and I think that's what we strive for.
Yeah, I just got another thing online while we were discussing, and that is, with what's going on now with the pandemic and City Hall closed, is there any way that we can extend the signup period, or even make it an online system? Because otherwise, you could have a problem with people signing up, period.
So, again, Alderman Dowd raises a really good point, because we just had a phone conversation on that this morning, Director Budrow and I and his benefits team. It's going to be a challenge this year. We're reaching out to WBS for their toolset, to see what they have in their warehouse, what products we can rely on. We'll be working with IT to see what recommendations they have, but there's a conference this Friday that we know of, that because people are starting to discuss this, now your open enrollment becomes a virtual one, because of the ongoing situation. So, we'll have to work through those challenges.
Okay, I'm all set.
Thank you, Alderman Dowd. I have Alderman Jettie.
And can I speak when you have a chance to? This is Alderman Clemmons. Thank you.
Alderman Cleaver as well.
Okay, I have Alderman Jettie, Alderman Clemmons, and Alderman Cleaver. I'll get to you all.
Okay, this is, this is Alderman Jettie, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. So, I understand, you know, we've been, we've been told for some time about the increase in, in the, you know, the rise in, in healthcare costs, and how that is, you know, so difficult for the city to deal with, in light of the fact that there are so many other pressures being put on the city, by the fact that the state government is, is doing less and less to support us. But I, I think this, you know, this comes at a, at a difficult time. I'm thinking about our employees, and, you know, what this, you know, from what I've heard this evening, is that the, the high-deductible health plan is not being changed at all, and it's something that, as attractive as, as it is, is an option for employees to choose, even without this legislation. What this legislation does is increase the, the deductibles for the HMO plan, and so, you know, I, I saw the chart that, that was part of the PowerPoint presentation, and it showed, you know, how the, how high, you know, how much greater the healthcare cost for the people in the HMO is, or are, and how that, when you divide it by the number of employees there, it's a higher average per employee. But I, I wonder if, if though, if that's a reflection on the, on, on the, the fact that the employees who have chosen the HMO have done so for, for whatever reasons, probably because they, they, they see it as initially cheaper for them, but they, you know, could in fact be people with greater need for healthcare, and that if we move them into the high-deductible plan, their cost will continue to be higher than the, than, than others, and it will just increase the cost of the, of the, of what we're paying for healthcare for the people in the high-deductible health plan. And I, I'm just wondering, you know, are we, you know, I, are, are we just, you know, pushing those, those high claimants, the people with the higher claims, into a different I also am concerned about the, you know, the employees that are going to be affected by this, not, probably not in this first wave, but as we try to implement this, you know, with the other employee groups, the unions, that are represented by unions, you know, we're talking about people who are on the front lines, and with this coronavirus crisis that we're facing, I'm wondering, are they more at risk? And I wonder about people in the high-deductible health plan, when they go to the doctor now, that, you know, that $3,000 that's, that's in their health savings account, and the thousand that they're gonna have to pay eventually, that initial $4,000 that they have to pay before the city takes over, are they gonna regard that really as their money, and be more reluctant to, to seek healthcare? And with, with the, this coronavirus crisis, the longer they wait, if they need healthcare, the longer they wait to get healthcare, the more expensive it's going to be. And I'm just, you know, wondering, you know, what, what the, what your comments are about in that regard, and, and what, what our consultant, you know, whether our consultant has weighed in on that issue.
Director Budrow, or Director Kleiner?
So, I'll start off, President Wilshire, and then Larry, Director Budrow can fill in any piece I've left out. We do understand with COVID-19 virus, this is uncharted territory. We don't know what that will do to claims. We don't know, we certainly encourage all of our employees, no matter what health plan you are on, to seek healthcare. That is one of the reasons that we have waived those costs for the telehealth, costs for Sydney. You can get a, through the Sydney app, you can get a virtual call with a doctor, and they can point you into the right direction. The cost for that evaluation is waived, as is the cost of testing. But I don't think realistically that we are going to be able to give much information on what we expect to happen with claims as related to the current crisis. Having said that, with the HSA, if you are a family, the most you are going to pay out of pocket is that $1,000. Now, studies do not show that people have reframed from getting healthcare in order to save that money. Studies realistically, time after time, show that people become better educated consumers. You know, we, we used to say, "It's like having some skin in the game." Yes, it, it's their money, they'd like to keep it, and they'd like not to have to pay it, so they're going to use some education and make some realistic decisions in how that money is spent. And that has been what industry studies have shown over time, and I'll give it to Director Budrow.
Thanks, Director Kleiner. Good evening, Alderman Jettie.
Good evening.
I would, I think that, one speculation of the reason that people join HMO is that they perceive that it may cost them less, which I believe you indicated. I think as reasonable a speculation, the reason that so many people are in the HMO is because it's been the predominant healthcare plan for the last 40 years in this country. And so, people have it because that's what they had, and the high-deductible health plan is much newer than that. And if you're comfortable with what the plan you had at the last company, then you, you can join it when you come here. So, the high-deductible health plan is for the whole country, a new opportunity. I don't believe, perhaps some cases it would be true, but I don't believe that you could find many comparisons between two people with the same healthcare conditions who would save money through having the HMO. And to the point of whether people can access healthcare, that the speculation of, will the higher-cost claimants move into the HDHP now, and therefore, the difference will go away, we would hope not. And over time, as the, the data builds, and there's now probably 15 years of data that Anthem has, that WBS can access, it's, it continues to be consistently lower. It's still $4,000 on average, all these years later. So, I, I think there's a good chance that the lower cost continues to prevail, and I'm not sure that when people make healthcare decisions, I've been party to those first day of employment decisions people make for a long time. It's not necessarily analysis, because they think they are choosing the less, least expensive. They're often choosing the one that they are most comfortable with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further, Alderman Jettie?
No, thank you very much.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, and this probably goes to Director Budrow. Alderman Dowd had asked this question about the breaking up of that $3,000 between July 1 and October 1. First, my question is, is it common practice to do a lump sum? Or is it something that, I mean, so is that just part of the way that the program would work, is that you would just pay it all at once, or with an equal amount of payment? And the second part of that is, what is the expected loss? Do we know, on average, how many people leave?
May I, Madam President?
Director Budrow.
Oh, gee. So, Alderman Cle, again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start with the last question first, because that's what I remember, and that is, relative to phasing the contribution payment, basically, is that necessary? How many people leave? Well, we did look at that, I don't have the numbers in my head, but it's not really a lot of people. One of the timing phenomena is that this also considers, and of course, we're not, we're not talking about the schools yet in general, so is that because the school year starts in September, but the fiscal year for the city and the fiscal year for the health plan starts in July, there's the possibility sometimes that we enroll a teacher, and we provide the full benefit for $3,000, and then they don't return to school that school year. And, and so, we could have, in that case, And and so we could have, in that case, paid the $3,000 to the contribution. Intending for that to be for the next twelve month period, and it might only end up being for the next three months of. Well, actually, in the next two months of July and August. And secondly, there. Yeah, we've mostly been communicating with Manchester about their plan, and they do pay their plan installments also.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes, thank you. I'm in complete agreement with paying it and and in payments. I just didn't know if it's common practice for one big lump sum. Or is it more common to have it kind of drawn out, whether it be July and October? Or whether it's done four times a year, three times a year? I I just, I would feel more comfortable if we're paid out that way. But I also understand that if you have one major incident at the beginning of the year, you want that $3,000 there. But again, if they then did have that care, got their $3,000. And then left, as you said, we, whether they took it with them or used it, it's still in the same kind of boat. So, thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you very much. So I have a few questions. I'll let whoever wants to answer them, answer them. Just so I'm clear. There are no co-pays on the high deductible plan, correct?
Correct.
So like if you go to the pharmacy or you have a prescription or whatever, you're just paying the whatever the prescription costs. And then once you reach that, if in the case of a family, once you reach that $4,000, that then what happens?
Then you don't pay anything.
Okay.
Just to note, Alderman Clemmons, there was some question on this, so I just want to be clear. They are paying the negotiated rate. So you continue to get, even though you're on the high deductible plan, you continue to get the negotiated rate. That Anthem has with either the pharmacy on the medical drug or the doctor on. The provider rate.
Thank you. So overall, on a month to month basis. You know, the the cost that comes out of the employee's paycheck, I'm I'm thinking that the, you explained that the. The high deductible is is less.
So. President Willshire?
Director Kleiner.
So currently. As it is right now, the HMO is more than the high deductible health plan. And and significantly for a family, you're looking at, you know, $6,100, I'm rounding. To the high deductible plan for, you know, $4,300. Um, that changes a little bit. And with the HMO and the change, you're dropping from that $6,000 to $5,100. And the high deductible HSA plan is actually just a tad bit more expensive at 5274. So right now, on the current HMO, it's it's considerably higher. And then with the shift in plan design. The HMO will be just a tad bit less expensive.
Okay. So. So they're about the same as far as the costs for. You know, what what's coming out of my paycheck every week? Roughly.
With the new plan designed, yes. Now, the the employee with the HMO pays significantly more.
Okay. So my other question is on the HMO plan. The deductibles are going up. But the, if you if you take the HMO plan, the. You're getting, the city's contributing basically the exact amount the deductibles are. Is that correct?
President, President Willshire.
Whoever wants to answer, please go go ahead.
So with the change in the deductible for the HMO. Which if you are to be hospitalized or have an outpatient surgery. You could be charged on a family that $3,000 deductible. The cost is going down 15% if you stay on the HMO. It'll drop 19% from the current HMO to the HSA if you were to switch over. And I'm not sure that answered your question, Alderman Clemmons.
So now it's it right now, the. It it's a $250 deductible for an individual and a 500 for a family on the HMO. Correct? That's what it is right now? Okay.
Correct.
So it's going to change to 1,500 and 3,000?
Correct.
However, the the city is going to give a health savings account to anyone with the HMO of 1,500 and 3,000?
With with the HSA? Yes, 15. With the HSA, we give the contribution to this health savings account.
Okay, so. Now, that's only, so this is where I'm confused. So if you have the HMO, you 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 aren't paying that. We're not giving you a self health savings account, is that correct or?
Director Boudreau? Sorry, Director Boudreau has hand up.
Thank you. May I jump in? Alderman Clemmons, the the deductible for the HMO is not a first dollar deductible as it is for the high deductible health plan. You could go, in fact. According to one of the statistics that Ms. Kleiner had earlier this evening, 95% of the people on the HMO were not hospitalized in 2019. And if those same people did not have an outpatient procedure either, then none of them paid a penny towards the deductible. It's only applied for inpatient admission and outpatient surgical procedures. So and with an HMO, an HMO is a plan designed for which the IRS does not approve a health savings account. You can only have a health savings account if you have a high deductible health plan. I'll stop there so that you can clarify further if you like. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I'm, yeah, okay, so so the, so basically what you're saying is that. With the with, if you have the high deductible plan. You will get a health savings account and the city will put either 2,000 or 4,000 into it. For your out of pocket expenses that you can use. But if you have an HMO, that you're responsible for the full deductible if you incur one.
Director Boudreau?
That's. That was nearly correct, Alderman Clemmons. The the only difference is that the the city's going to contribute $1,500 and 3,000. Towards the deductibles of 2,000 and 4,000 respectively. And in the HMO, you are correct, there's no contribution to help allay those expenses.
Okay, so essentially. The, so this is what I was trying to get to. So essentially. The, what we're really looking at here. Is the individual, if you have the HMO. Effectively. If you're an individual, the cost to you. Is going to go up by. What, $250?
Larry Boudreau here?
Yep.
So if you. If you have the HMO today. And you stay with it, the cost is going to go down. And Ms. Kleiner may have been a better person to answer. The cost is going to go down about 15%. So that the cost for both the high deductible health plan and the HMO are about the same. In terms of their premium contribution, their 20% share of the premium. The current, the current HMO is much more expensive than the high deductible plan.
So, okay, so I guess what I'm asking is this, right now. What what I'm asking is, is the city pays some, if if I go into the hospital and I'm on the HMO in, let's say, August of this coming year. And I have to pay the whole amount of money, right, for my deductible, let's say it's 500, or I'm sorry, let's say it's $3,000. How much of that is the city going to pay?
Director Kleiner?
So Alderman Clemmons, if you're on that HMO currently. And you go in.
In August.
In August, okay, in August, if you if you are hospitalized in August. Then you are going to run into that $3,000 deductible.
And how much of that is the city going to pay?
That is your deductible. So if you're a family, if you're on the family plan. That's your deductible. Up to that amount, the employee would incur. What we're saying is because the cost of the plan has been reduced. If if you saved that cost. You could apply it towards that deductible. And then that would bring that exposure to $2,000. And he put the slide back up for us so that we could see it. Because you're saving $936. Annually because of the plan change.
Okay. I understand now. So and then, of course, my my last, okay, I understand that now. Thank you. And then my last question is. I I think I, I think this is pretty straightforward, just the days are just increasing on the HMO from five to 10. You know, if you were to go to a, to get a prescription at the pharmacy. I think I have that correct.
Whoever wants to answer that?
Well, I'm 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 sorry, Alderman Clemmons' voice was choppy. I think it had something to do with the going to the pharmacy, but could he repeat the question?
Alderman Clemmons, can you repeat that?
Yes, I I I think I understand. I think this is the most straightforward part of it is that just the co-pays on the HMO are are basically doubling. From where they are now.
Director Boudreau or?
Yes, 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 that's true. That's true for the pharmacy.
Okay, so I I just want to make a couple of comments, I guess, if I if I can.
Sure, Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. The reality is that right now, you know, for me. We're in a tough, this is a tough place we're in right now. We want to try to balance what we. Can do for our employees. With the understanding that we have a limited amount of resources to do it with. You know, the economy right now has never been worse. And that happened overnight. And, you know, we. When the economy was doing fine, the mayor came with to us with budget that had an over 4% increase in the in the tax rate. So my thought is that that's going to have to change if this economy doesn't turn around with this coronavirus. So, you know, this is a pretty good proposal. To try and help us mitigate some of those costs. I understand that, you know, it's it's difficult to. Try to budget and and things like that, and and you're doing something completely different that you've never done before. But the reality is, is that, you know, we can't keep going down the road we're going. We have to be able to do something to change our healthcare costs. Until either the state or more likely the federal government does something to bring down those costs. So we have to do what we can do locally to do that. And I think this is a pretty good proposal. It gives people a clear choice. And, you know, it's unfortunate that we can't keep things the way that they were. But it's just not sustainable, unfortunately. And I I would rather have all of these people working. As opposed to laying them off because we have to pay for the healthcare of. Some of them and lay off the rest in order to do it. So for those those reasons, I'm going to support this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Clemmons. Next, we have Alderman Cleaver.
Thank you very much. A couple of questions. First of all. Who are the providers besides Anthem and has there been any shopping?
Director Boudreau?
We we moved to just one provider purposefully. This last year, we had two before. Harvard Pilgrim and Anthem. We are self-funded. The City of Manchester and the City of Nashua are the only two self-funded municipalities in the state because of our size. And there are economies of scale that come from having just one administrator instead of two. That that may not have answered all your questions, just part of it.
Alderman Cleaver? Alderman Cleaver, did we lose you?
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, yeah, the the follow up is. When is the last time we approached another provider for a cost estimate?
Oh, I'll I'll continue the response. I'm sorry, I forgot that. Oh, we did RFPs this last. Not for fiscal '21, but for fiscal '20. WBS, the consultant that Director Kleiner has mentioned a number of times this evening, has done that for us. We usually do it about every three years and and Anthem was the best choice.
Could I add to that answer?
Mayor?
Now, keep in mind that we're self-insured, so the city is paying the claims just out of tax money. So we're not paying an insurance company to insure people. We're paying them only to. We're paying them only to administer the claim. And either Ms. Kleiner or Mr. Budrow can correct me if I'm wrong in this figure, but out of the approximately $50 million we're projected to spend on healthcare, only like a million two is for administration. So, you know, it's 2% of the, of the entire cost. So even if you, you know, even, you know, even if we, so the, whether it goes up or down a little bit with the administrator, obviously we wanna save every dollar, but, uh, even the, um, even if it goes up or down a bit on the administrator, that being Anthem or someone else, it doesn't really affect, because it's only 2% of the budget, it doesn't really affect the overall picture. In addition, by move, last year, we saw an eight, uh, 11% increase, but that was after we reduced the cost, we reduced the number of administrators from two to one and thereby saved $400,000. So, I think the, you know, just having a single administrator um, is not the same as, as, you know, just having an insurance company that covers everybody. Again, this is, we're self-insured, so we're paying only for the administration of the claims, not for the, we're not paying Anthem for the claims themselves or to provide the insurance.
Alderman Cleaver?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. The, uh, the next question is, if somebody has, or, or a family has medical issues early on, they could be out $4,000 until they get $1,500 reimbursed on July 1, and then the following $1,500 on October 1st. Do I understand that correctly?
Mr. Budrow?
Our, our plan year runs from July to the following June. So immediately upon signing up effective July 1st, we, you get the, there's $1,500 the next day. And then the second $1,500 would come on October 1st, unless you needed it before that, in which case we would provide it when you needed it. Is, is that answer the question?
Yeah, that answers the question, thank you very much. Next is just a comment, not a question, but it seems to me that this issue in this presentation is a ringing, ringing endorsement for Medicare for All.
Are you all set, Alderman Cleaver?
Yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome. I think I had someone before you, Alder, Alderwoman Kelly. Linda, did you have your hand in the queue?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
I do have some questions, okay?
Okay.
Just as Elizabeth.
Okay, uh, Linda, you go first, please.
Okay. Is it a either/or in terms of the different, um, insurances? If I, if you don't go with the HMO, then you have to go with the S, the HSA, is that correct?
Director Budrow?
We, we have offered a third alternative and will continue to, it's a point-of-service plan. Uh, it is considerably more expensive than either of the two. And the, the, the whole city has only about 120 employee, people enrolled on it, most of whom are retirees living away.
Okay. Another question?
Alderman Gethrake?
The HSA, um, there was somewhere I read that it carries over for, um, you can carry it over to the next year. Is that the end of it, or does it continue to carry over year after year?
Director Budrow?
Sorry, Director Kleiner. It, it, it is not the end of it. It, it carries over year after year. And when you retire or resign, it is, uh, it, it becomes your money the instant you first get that $3,000. And it continues year after year, and when you retire or resign, you take that with you.
Okay, and one last question.
Okay.
So for the unaffiliated, that's their choice to choose one of those three options, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, Alderwoman Kelly?
Uh, yeah, I have a few questions. So, um, actually, the first one was actually something that you just said, Director Budrow. So you said you'd take that money with you when you retire. Does it still say in an HSA, so you can only access it for healthcare?
Director Budrow?
It does stay in an HSA. Um, however, HSA is like other tax-deferred savings accounts. Uh, you can take the money and spend it on anything, but you do pay the taxes at that point.
Okay, thank you. Um, so my second question is around projections. So I know our projections, in terms of how much our healthcare was gonna go up, we're done, you know, earlier this year. I'm not sure anyone will be able to answer this, but I'm assuming that, given, you know, the state of the world and the crisis that we're in, that those, those numbers will adjust.
Director Budrow?
President, may Director Kleiner take that question?
Yes.
So, the numbers that we see, Alder, uh, Alderwoman Kelly, are always an estimate. Um, and they do fluctuate, and we see that throughout the year. We did speak with WBS today. I think, you know, we have some concerns, but you can look at it this way. So you saw a big push in, um, elective procedures being canceled because of the crisis. Um, so those costs weren't realized. Um, and what costs we will see now towards the end of the year as a result of the crisis are really an unknown. So we could actually have a drop in claims for people that have had these elective surgeries now postponed. Or we could see a surge towards the end, um, when we receive them in May and June. Um, and, you know, we'd be happy to keep the board more inform, informed on that. But we do see a fluctuation. Um, and then with Anthem's change in reporting this year, um, that has, um, made things a little different as to when we are comfortable, um, making the projection. Um, and we actually delayed it and didn't inform the mayor of the production until, um, later than normal.
Thank you. Um, I had one more follow-up, um, if that's okay, Madam President.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Uh, thank you. So, my, I think this makes sense. I know we came to you guys and asked you to look at plan design as a way to potentially um, mitigate the cost to the city. My question is, so much of the savings that we're talking about is predicated on people actually making that shift. So what is the plan that we'll put in place? I know you talked about ambassadors to help people make that shift. Uh, because we're gonna have to build a budget based on, you know, a, a number that we're not sure if we'll hit unless those people decide to make the change.
Director Kleiner?
So, um, let's look at the, the employee group we're talking about. There's 113 subscribers. 51 of those are already on the HSA. 59 on the HMO, and then three on the POS plan that Director Budrow talked about. Um, we're gonna have a lot of education for those 59 H, current HMO subscribers um, to try to switch them over, um, to the HSA for the next plan year. Um, and we can, with this small group of 113, you know, we can really reach out and, and have those conversations. Um, with the larger group, the total population as a whole, um, they are, each division is having those conversations. So GPW is talking with their people, police are actively talking with their people. Um, and the teachers' union is, is talking with teachers. Um, and that's how we realistically think we're going to drive the largest shift. Um, our budget projection in the fiscal '21 budget is the entire increase that we recommended to Mayor Donches. So any potential savings that we see as a result of plan change will be to our benefit.
Great, thank you very much.
All set, Alderwoman Kelly? Alderwoman Lou? Alderwoman Lou, are you there?
Hello, can you hear me now?
We can, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a few quick questions. The EOB, is that estimate of benefit?
That is an explanation of benefits.
Okay. Uh, great, so, um, so that's something that you receive, uh, to explain how much you owe and how much the city picked up.
That's correct.
Correct? Thank you. Um, on the invitation that was sent to the, um, members of the unaffiliated group, it was sent out on March 9th. What date were they invited to, to come and learn about their, this proposal?
Director Kleiner?
They received an email from the mayor directly um, on the 9th for a meeting on the 12th.
I see, so they had three-day notice and, and, but only a few came, right?
No, we had a, a fantastic, um, attendance, I would say roughly 60 to 70 attended the meeting with the mayor.
Oh, okay, it must have been the director's meeting that I'm remembering, that only a few came to. Okay, so 60 or 70 of the 135 were able to come and, and, and discuss it and learn about it.
That is correct.
Is that right?
Yes, it was held in the city auditorium.
Okay. Um, and just the fire department, it, it's been mentioned that they're, they have, um, a large enrollment in the HD, in the high deductible. But it's not the same plan, is it? I mean, they're, we're not talking about the same plan. They're a, um, I'm sorry. They're a union, and they probably have some kind of a slightly, you know, every plan is specific, is that correct? So when we say a lot of them have signed up, we don't mean that a lot of them have signed up for this particular plan.
Director Kleiner?
The high deductible health plan and with the health savings account is the exact same plan across the city.
Cross, oh, okay. Is that true of going forward, is that how these plans work? That, uh, are they sometimes? I was under the impression they're tweaked by the unions? Or they can be? I mean, it's negotiated, so they may be slightly different from one union to another?
I think the confusion is that the proposed healthcare plan design that is proposed this evening is for unaffiliated employees. That has to be negotiated into any union agreement going forward with our 17 unions. So their HMO would remain the same unless the union agreed to negotiate that change.
Okay, I was just trying to clarify, um, I was just trying to understand what had been discussed about the fire department having been all sign, uh, highly signed in, but I guess, was that comment about just the high deductible plan as it is? As it currently is?
Yes, they have been very active with their members, um, in educating them on the benefits of the high deductible health plan, um, which we think results in the change and the shift to the high deductible health.
Okay, and just after retirement, I, I don't know whether our, um, city employees stay on the health plan after retirement, but do we continue to pay into the, um, HSAs for retired employees?
Can I respond?
Yep, you may.
Thank you. When, when employees retire from the City of Nashua, if they retire before they're 65 years old, they are eligible to continue the city's health plans, but the employee pays the full premium. They are able to choose any of the health plans that the active employees have. So they could pick the current high deductible health plan, or the current HMO, or the current point-of-service plan. If they choose the high deductible plan, the answer is yes, we do contribute the $3,000 to the family deductible.
I guess my, my concern is, couldn't that become an increasingly, um, kind of like a, um, a pension, you know, almost, almost as though we're building pensions into our retiring, uh, you know, we're adding to pensions almost, um, to have. So, thank you. Um, and the, and, and another question is just about that Smart Shopper. So, I, I'm, I've been on high deductible plans before, and I, I understand, um, the benefit of, you know, healthy living incentives and incentivizing your employees to, uh, shop and to know the benefits, uh, rather, to know the cost of healthcare um, so that they can be an agent and maybe change. But, um, I'm not, I wasn't clear on that slide of the Smart Shopper and whether, is there a commission that we pay for this Smart Shopper? Or is it just part of the package that, um, this WBS offers?
Director Budrow?
We, the, the Smart Shopper is a for-profit organization, and, um, they generally do business with a per employee. So, Smart Shop, Smart Shopper usually, um, gets paid on a per employee, per month basis. The City of Nashua was, uh, reluctant to find ourselves paying more uh, for the service than we reaped in savings, and so we began our relationship with sharing the cost savings 70%, 30%. So if you were to look at that slide again, uh, sorry to, well, I'll just tell you what it was, there, there was a net savings of $25,000 by Smart Shopper. We actually, uh, retained 70% of that and, uh, left 30%. So two-thirds of the way down, oh, go ahead.
Alderwoman Lou?
But what is Smart Shopper?
Can you imagine?
Director Budrow?
I, I recall, you last asked, I think, what is Smart Shopper? And, and it's an organization that is constantly mining the data from Anthem, so it knows what facilities have charged how much for certain procedures. And then through a, uh, a web portal, and also through, with telephone assistance, when someone has a, has to get a MRI, for example. Uh, and I did this before Smart Shopper. Um, and when I switched to the health savings plan, the first time I, I was ordered to have an MRI, I participated in where it was gonna be. Now I would call Smart Shopper. They would take a look at the doctor's order, and they would look at facilities and say, you go to this facility, we'll, we'll give you $250 incentive.
Thanks, thank you. Um, and, am I muted?
No, we can hear you.
Okay, um, is that built into the price of the plan? Is that service part of the plan? Hello?
Director Budrow? Director Budra?
I, I will answer part of this question, Director Kleiner may want to, uh, help with the budgeting piece. So, the, the, the cost of the plan, the, the cost of the plan is only a projection, a projection, because we're paying claims as they come and we can only guess what they're going to be. And so we have guessed at, uh, the, kind of the high end, they projected the increases from last year's, uh, and this year we introduced this, so we are ostensibly saving a little money from what was projected.
Oh, e- excuse me, I'm not sure you understood, I'm just asking about the cost of Smart Shopper. Is that, is that paid for by the cost of the high deductible plan?
Director Kleiner?
It's, so, no, the Smart Shopper, um, we are realizing 70% of the savings and Smart Shopper is retaining 30% of the savings. That is not incurred in the cost of the high deductible health plan, it's, it's, its own benefit.
Okay, all right, I think I understand, okay. And just last of all, um, oh, the CBA strategy you mentioned, um, since, um, I don't know, it was quite a while ago that you, you said, you talked about the CBA strategy, but I was not clear on what you were referring to. Charlie Baker Adam?
Director Kleiner?
Uh, see, my apology for using the acronym in the first place, um, collective bargaining. Um, so we have a strategy team between members of management, um, for the city, uh, HR, legal, and the members from the employer boards, um, whether it is, you know, a member of the fire commissioners and the police commissioners, um, so when I speak of employer boards, that's what I'm referring to.
Thank you.
And we have, you're welcome.
Sorry, that makes sense, I just wasn't clear. Um, thank you very much for, for having this meeting, I think there was so many questions, we all had so many questions and, um, certainly, uh, we needed a meeting. Uh, and I hope that, uh, in the future, that we could consider, if I, I think a lot of our questions could have been answered if we had, if some of us had the time, we might have been willing to go to the employee meeting and we would have been, you know, so much more well-informed to even take a vote on the first, uh, you know, in the first meeting. But I'm all set, I have no more questions, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions? Can we take that slide down? Anyone else have questions?
Yes, can you hear me?
Alderman Gathright?
Okay, lastly, of the roughly 3,000 employees, approximately how many have sounds, uh, signed up or it could be a percentage of the, today, as of today?
Director Kleiner?
Um, I apologize, um, Alderman Gathright broke up a little, um, was the question the difference between the HSA, the HMO?
No, it was, well, I guess I should have said how many have signed up for the, um, the newer program, not the HMO, the, um...
High deductible plan?
Yeah, hi, yeah, hi, yeah, that one.
So, current, currently, um, out of all of our subscribers, uh, we have 581 on the high deductible plan with the HSA.
Okay, follow up?
Yes, Alderman Gathright.
And the timeline for this, let's say 581, um, this start, did this start back last July?
Two years ago.
With the new, with this plan, the new plan, the high density plan, started two years ago? Really?
Madam President?
Yes. Director Budra?
I believe it was 2013, and it's been a slow growth since.
Oh, comment, I thought this was something that last year for myself, I'd heard for the first time, I think, in an automatic meeting, and it was brought up that this was something that we were looking at, um, so I apologize, I didn't know this was something that's been going on for a very long time.
Anyone else? Sorry, Alderman Gathright, I thought you were done.
I am, thank you, I'm all set.
Yeah, you're welcome. Anyone else have any questions? Seeing none. Alderman O'Brien, do I have a motion?
Thank you, Madam President, I would like to make a motion to take from the table, Order 020 dash 011, and have it by roll call.
The motion is to take ordinance 20 dash 11 from the table by roll call, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Cle?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
No.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Laws?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright?
No.
Alderman Wilshire?
Yes.
You have 13 yays and two nays.
That motion carries. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President, I would like to make a motion, uh, to recommend final passage of 020 dash 011.
City clerk?
Yes, it is just from Madam President, roll call, please.
Roll call, uh...
I may third reading?
Please.
Of ordinance 02011, revisions to the health plan section of the unaffiliated employees' personal policies.
The motion?
Final passage by roll call?
Yes.
The hesitance and...
We have discussion?
Yeah, yes, I'll get to that. Um, is there discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
So, I, I appreciate the, um, the presentation that we've received this evening, it's, um, and I, I especially appreciated, uh, getting the, uh, the PowerPoint presentation ahead of time, that was really helpful, um, gave us a chance to review that before tonight's meeting so that we could, uh, be better able to ask intelligent questions. But, the truth of the matter is that we've, um, you know, we've just received the presentation in, in great detail, a lot of our questions have been answered, but, um, the, uh, the agenda called for just this, uh, discussion on this ordinance, and in fact, uh, I asked you, Madam President, whether there would be any, a vote on this, and you said, no, it was just for discussion. Um, so I don't see that there is an emergency that requires that we vote on this tonight, we're having a meeting coming up, uh, that would give us, that was the original plan and that would give us time to, um, to implement this, uh, if we, if we so choose, uh, in, in time for the, uh, the signup, uh, which, um, may in fact be extended. Um, but I, in, in view of that, um, you know, there was a lot of information given to us tonight, um, I would, I would like the opportunity to digest that, and I would like the opportunity to, you know, hear from anybody, uh, who is going to be affected by this to, to, uh, to weigh in, you know, with me or any of the other aldermen before we, uh, we vote on its final passage. So I, I'm opposed to, um, voting on this, uh, and I would move to table this until our, our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Motion is to table, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Um...
Alderman Cle?
No.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Yeah.
Alderman Dowd?
No.
Alderman Karen?
No.
Alderman Clemmons?
No.
Alderman Lopez?
No.
Alderman Tenza?
No.
Alderman Lou?
Yep.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Schmidt?
No.
Alderman Laws?
No.
Alderman Cleaver?
No.
Alderman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire?
No.
Four yays, four nays.
And that motion fails. Uh, Alderman O'Brien, do you have a, uh, amendment to your motion?
Yes.
It's not to recommend, it's for final passage.
Right.
Okay.
I, I would like to amend my original motion to amend it to, uh, for final passage.
I can't hear you.
Not recommend. Doesn't have to be an amendment, just a cloud. Okay. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, so the motion before us is for final passage of ordinance 2011. Further discussion on that motion? Brian?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I think we sat in this chambers and we did hear from the mayor that there is somewhat of some critical need of this. Uh, he did have like a timeline that he was dealing with and he kind of encouraged, and it, but someone, my brethren on the Board of Aldermen brought up the good point that, uh, they wanted some information, so we delayed it. Well, I think the information has been adequately brought forward, and I think because of the time constraints that are involved, I recommend to move my motion forward for final passage.
Further discussion? Alderman Lopez?
As it is the apocalypse, I thought I should agree with Alderman O'Brien. I think we have reviewed this pretty thoroughly tonight, and I, we had an opportunity to approach city employees if we felt there were concerns. The previous Board of Aldermen meeting was public and, uh, legislation was, was posted. So, last week I was concerned that we need to make sure that we are doing our due diligence and engaging in public discussion so that the public knows we're not just making decisions on a whim, but this is two hours in, there's nobody can think that we were doing that. So, I think we've done plenty of, of vetting of this. I understand that there may be additional questions that, uh, other aldermen have, and I respect that, but for myself, I think we can make a decision that's pretty well-informed.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. Alderman Kelly?
Uh, yeah, thank you. I, I understand that we have taken the time to vet this as alderman and I appreciate that, uh, the reason I voted, um, to put it back on the table is because we did say that, and I understand that the city has done a great job of, um, engaging people and, and getting the information to them, but if something come up, has come up in this meeting that anyone wants to speak to, um, I feel uncomfortable not allowing them at least a week, and I think we did say that next week's meeting was fine, uh, to pass this. So if that is not the case, can someone respond to me in terms of the timing, um, because I, I thought that was how we left it, we were going to table it and bring it back at next week's meeting.
We were going to bring it back at next week's meeting until we had this meeting.
Okay.
I mean, that, that, we, it was just being put off until the next meeting, and this happened to be the next meeting.
Okay.
So, anyone else?
Comment please? Yes.
Alderman Lou?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, well, my feeling is that, uh, we've spent two and a half hours, um, discussing this. Uh, we, we did receive information five hours before we met, but not all of us had the time to look at it, um, with much advanced time before the meeting. So my expectations, I mean, I would have hoped that if this information is available to inform us, that we can be avail of it sooner, uh, than the day of the vote. Um, my understanding is that this is, is not something that's needed to be voted today, and I know two of my colleagues have just gathered the information and they feel that they can, that they would be better prepared with time to reflect and maybe do some further whatever they need to do. And out of respect for them, I feel, why do we feel we have to rush a vote when some of our colleagues, um, want to go by the originally proposed schedule for a vote at our regularly scheduled meeting? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Alderman Jettie?
Uh, could, could I ask, through you, could I ask the mayor whether, um, the original plan to vote on this at our next regularly scheduled meeting would give him enough time to implement this, or does he feel that we have to vote on this tonight?
Mayor Donches? Mayor Donches, you're muted, we can't hear you.
Oh, sorry, 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 sorry.
Okay, you're good.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Um, I would defer to some extent to Ms. Kleiner and Mr. Budra on timing. We do have an open enrollment period coming up quickly, and as somebody has already pointed out, we need to be pretty, we, we need to be creative about how we engage employees who are now working remotely in terms of trying to get them involved, so, or get them informed so that if they wish to make a choo, a change, they can do it, and they realize that the, the time is up and they can, you know, have their questions answered and all that kind of thing. So, I mean, I would say the sooner the better, but, um, I will, beyond that, I will refer to Ms. Kleiner and Mr. Budra.
Director Kleiner?
Um, thank you, President Wilshire. It is going to be a challenge now with the fact that we have to reach out, um, to all of our employees, um, who are working, most of whom are working remotely. Um, having said that, we wanted to allow WBS, um, some time to incorporate some of these new changes into our annual enrollment documents. To be honest, it would be better if we could have a decision this evening, but we would make next Tuesday work as well, it's just all about having that extra time for employee education.
Thank you, Director Kleiner, and I know education is really an important piece of this ordinance, so, um, I, I would agree that the sooner we can get this done, the more time we have to educate employees and, um, and get the open enrollment going, so, thank you. Anyone else?
Me? Hello?
Who's me?
Hello?
Alderman Karen? Oh.
Hi.
Alderman Karen?
Okay, so, we're talking about taking a vote today for an enrollment that's supposed to take place, uh, the beginning of April for about a month or so. We don't meet at the board again for two more weeks, it's not next Tuesday, because that's only the first, uh, Tuesday of the month, we usually meet the second, so... We usually meet the second, so this is really going to make it difficult for HR to notify employees of these changes. So I think it's important that we move forward with a vote. I have been looking at this all day and I've listened to the questions and the answers and I think that it's important for the Board of Aldermen to do this vote tonight so that staff has the time to get this ready for all its employees. The other thing is that changes in benefits or deductibles happen all the time and that doesn't preclude the employees from staying in their HMO or moving to the high deductible insurance plan. I've seen it over the years, being an employee of the city. So I think it's important at this time that we look at what's good for our employees and I will be voting yes on this particular piece of legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Karen. Anyone else? Seeing none? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
There are 15 yeas.
And that motion carries. Ordinance 20-11 is duly adopted. I think that's all the business we have before us this evening. Alderman Dowd?
Yes, I just want to address that, that given the guidance that we're getting from the governor and the state in New Hampshire and not wanting to have more than 10 people gather in one spot, I think that we, we probably should be considering not allowing public comments at our meetings until after the epidemic is over. Has nothing to do with R 2009. We have access, the people can watch it on TV. A lot of the other state meetings and city meetings are being done that way and it's not that we're precluding them from coming to the meeting, but in, in lieu of having a larger group than we should have by state guidance during the epidemic, we should probably eliminate public comment to minimize the public that might want to come.
Well, I think that's worthy of a discussion. I guess I, I feel kind of mixed about it. I think, you know, getting, I, I understand there haven't been people here for public comment at the last couple of meetings, but I'm concerned for the public coming in and, and maybe gathering and, and not following the social distancing recommendations. The public does have the opportunity to watch this on TV. They have an opportunity to email us or to send us in writing something, so I, I'd like to throw it out there and see how other people on the board feel about it. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you. I, I would generally support Alderman's Dowd proposal and the reason is, is like you said, Madam President, there's many ways that I think people can get a hold of us through email, phone numbers, our contact number has been published, so people can feel free that they can, you know, get a hold of us. I know if I'm not around, you hit my answer machine, I do try to get back to you and everything else. So coming to the meetings in this type of environment that we're currently going under right now does cause a hazard to everybody concerned. And even we are trying to take the precautions. People can see it on TV, we're more than six feet away from each other, many did not show up here in person, they are exercising their virtual rights of doing so. And also I take solace in the notion that I don't think there's a state law that requires the public to speak at an automatic meeting and I could refer to maybe corporate counsel which has put his fingers into that mud pile, but I may stand corrected, but I, I've watched the automatic meetings over the years and this seems to have been something that was invented by previous boards that was brought in and not necessarily required by city statute or order.
Is that a question to the preparation counsel? Attorney Bolton?
Yes, in a few instances, state law requires public hearings. So if we were to authorize a bond issue, zoning ordinances, the budget resolution every year, you have to have a public hearing and the essence of that is the public gets a chance to come in and speak and provide an opinion. But other than those instances where it's particularly required by statute, there is no requirement for public participation, public comment at an ordinary meeting of this board or most city boards.
Alderman O'Brien?
And I just want to clarify to anybody in the public, things that I am trying to stifle the voice, that is not the case. I'm talking about this pandemic that we're going through right now and everybody's safety, you know, it's extreme measures, I understand that. I am kind of uncomfortable with limited input from the public as I am a public service, have been for a long time, but we've got to take some precautions of limiting how, you know, close on parks that our children traditionally go to enjoy. And so we're taking other very acute measures and this may just have to be one for everybody's thinking. Regrettably, I agree to it.
Alderman Clea?
Thank you, and I agree. I agree doing this all virtual would be the best thing, but I'd like to hear from Attorney Bolton as far as do we set ourselves up for any kind of litigation that says that this, anything that we do here can be undone? So, do you know what I'm saying? If, if we don't do certain types of things, like a lot of the people there, they say the right to know. I just want to make sure that nothing that we do during this timeframe can be undone because they said we didn't follow the rules. When I've seen, I thought I saw something that stated how our meetings had to go, like public comment at the beginning and as long as we're not violating anything.
Well, you have your own rules of procedure.
Right.
Which as they are now, provide for public comment at the beginning of the meeting on issues expected to be dealt with at the meeting and at the end of the meeting on general issues. But that's your rule, that's not imposed on you. You can change them anytime you wish to change and you can ignore them when you wish to, frankly. Where you proceed in violation of your own rules, that's the equivalent of unanimous vote to dispense with them for that purpose. So you can, you are not required to have public comment. As I said, there are certain things in your power that require you to hear from the public first at a public hearing, so you have to follow those state laws. You have to follow state laws about open meetings and the public's right to observe what you do. Undercover circumstances, the governor has made some orders to waive, sometimes waive with conditions, some of those open meetings, but as long as we adhere to those conditions where they've been waived or the statutes that have not been waived, it should be all right as far as your proceedings overruled or undone, what happens. When in doubt, follow the law. When in doubt, follow the law as we.
Follow up, thank you. Thank you. You and I have had discussions about meetings that if, if we did this, that the public has to have the right to say, I can't see this meeting and therefore the meeting has to be ended. Is that follow through with this?
One of those orders that I was referring to about the governor was the, the portion of our S 91A that required that meetings be physically open to the public. That is, they take place at a location, that location is identified in the notice of the meeting and the public cannot be physically excluded from coming to that place and observing the meeting, seeing and hearing the meeting. Governor waived that requirement and you can close the meeting to the physical presence of the public if you make the audio available by telephone simultaneous through the actual conduct of the meeting and you provide a separate means of communication, presumably another telephone number, which would be monitoring a real meeting and that other telephone number would provide a way for a member of the public to call in and let it be known that that audio is not in fact being made available, that that person was not able to hear it when he called into the number to hear the telephone, the telephone broadcast of the meeting. That requires telephone, television doesn't count, computer video doesn't count, you do that too. But if you're going to exclude the physical presence of the public, have to have a telephone, audio simultaneous presentation available with a separate means of communication by the public if that audio presentation fails. You get notified, the audio presentation by telephone fails, you have to discontinue the meeting. You've not been doing that by law. The night happens to be no one here, but we did not exclude anyone from the public.
Alderman Clea?
Could I, could I please just?
In a moment, not calling you, I just recognized Alderman Clea.
So just.
I know, I'm just asking if the microphones to be turned off.
They're getting echo. Okay, so just to, to follow up on it, if we do what we say we're going to do and everybody is in a remote area, all of us, all 15 of us are in a remote area, do we still have to leave this room open for the public?
If we're not going to take advantage of this telephonic procedure with the phone in potential, 115 aldermen would be elsewhere and you could notice that the meeting would be available here or whatever room you chose and you set up the video computer monitor and everyone from the public who came in can see and hear every one of the 15 aldermen participating in the meeting. That's fine. You've got a physical location and you've got the public being able to observe it, hear it at that location. That's fine.
If City Hall is close to the public, that would still stand?
You have to have the room open to the public. So it's locked the outside doors, that would be a violation.
Oh, boy. Anyone else want to weigh in on this? Alderwoman Clea?
Yeah, so I have some questions and then comments. So my question is, from a technology standpoint, if we were to do the telephonic dial-in, is that a fairly easy thing for us to implement? Don't know who answers it.
Yeah, I don't either. We do have Director Cogginon here from the IT department. Would you care to weigh in?
Yes, you can actually just set up a separate conference bridge, like a pre-conference call type thing where people could call in on that conference bridge and somebody such as the clerk could monitor that conference bridge.
Perfect. If I could, so my comments are as follows. I think I'm kind of with you, Alderman Wiltshire, where I feel somewhat uncomfortable with limiting public comment because I do want to make sure that we are listening and, and taking public comment as we're bringing up our business. However, I do understand that it is a crisis right now and physically being somewhere is something that we have been recommended against fairly heavily by government officials all the way up to C and C. So I would generally be for this. I would like to put out there that if we do this, that if anyone offers public comment, I'm happy to do it, but we should read it in and be a little bit more diligent if we get an email or something from someone so it still gets read into the record.
And I don't have a problem with that, except if it's a 20-page.
Right.
I mean, we still have our limit, our 15-minute time period. So I, I guess I wouldn't be opposed to that.
Yeah, and I would say clarification, obviously we would ask any, any public comment that comes through by email or even for calling us, we would, we want it to be succinct as, as much as we push it to be when you're there in person.
Very good. Anyone else care to weigh in?
Yeah.
Linda, I'm sorry.
I'm waving.
We can't see you, Linda.
I, I can see you guys now, now I can see my picture there. So you can't see me now? Literally?
No.
Wow. Well, I, I can see down the bottom where I see you guys, then I see me too. It's weird. Okay. But anyway, I agree. I, I think that we, we can't stop people from being able to be, be a part of the hearings that we have. So for me, if we can't set up the phone bank or another line for them to call in on and someone is monitoring it, then we should be able to continue to have it open and available for them to come into City Hall for those meetings. I don't think people will come because I don't think anyone's come thus far, but I think legally, and I agree, that we have to have that venue there for them.
Okay. Anyone else have any?
Alderman Wiltshire?
Alderman Clea? Oh, I'm sorry, I did, I did have Alderman Clemmons and then Alderman Clea. Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you. I think, I'm in support of simply accepting written communications to us in lieu of public comment because, you know, the, the situation is that it, it just is, it, it is what it is. We should just limit it to that, I think, and I don't know about reading it into the record, but I have no problem putting it on file and having it be part of the, the record for that evening. And what I would, you know, recommend is that, you know, we have, anytime we get any communication that is to the entire board, that we just automatically put that on the agenda until this crisis is, is over.
Thank you, Alderman Clemmons. Anyone else care to weigh in on that? Alderman Clea?
I have a comment.
Okay. Get to you in a second.
Thank you very much. I guess my question will be to, I think we're getting an echo. I think my question is to Director Cognon also is that the, the bridge that you speak of, that we could do, would they would just listen or would they be able to be part of the conversation?
You can have it so you can mute them and when you want them to speak, be able to unmute them.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
My, thank you. If we're, there are people who can't, there are, is probably no one in this category, but there was a category of people who can't call, might not be able to call in or write in, but will come in. So I wonder if we could have someone there physically. I'm just, just for liability's sake, then the meeting is open. If things get different and we're voting on something that's very, there are a lot of opinions about it, then I would think that we could ask people who want to offer in-person input to contact their alderperson, and so we can find out how many people are coming in. If there are five people, we can distribute five people out there safely, is my thought. My other thought is, if we're going to proceed this way, then we should be careful to not vote on first reading, because who, who in the public knows that something needs to be talked about if we're going to be voting on it the first time it comes up? That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else care to weigh in on it? Alderman Dowd?
Yeah, I don't think that we do passing legislation very often on the first reading. It has to be something that's extremely urgent. I don't like the idea of trying to figure out how many people would show up, because there's no criteria for limiting that. You already, as I can see the chamber right now, you've got, I'm looking like six or seven people in the chamber right now, and if you had three more or four more, you violate the governor's rule on beating him 10, no matter how far apart you are. So at this point, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend all public comment during the duration of the pandemic, and that we ask the IT department to set up the proper communications to meet the criteria as outlined by Attorney Bolton, and hopefully we'll pass that.
So that's your motion? Discussion on that motion?
President Welshire.
Alderman Clemmons?
And Linda.
For you, to the maker of the motion, would the maker of the motion consider an amendment to his motion to add that the Board of Aldermen will accept written communications in lieu of in-person public comment?
Absolutely.
Alderman Dowd?
Absolutely, totally agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Linda, I mean, Alderman Gathright?
I like his motion, but I feel, still feel as though people have the right to come to a, you know, to be heard. And I realize that the room is not that large, and as he stated, I'm not there, so I'm not counting. And I'm going to go by what Rick Alderman Dowd said, that four people would be okay. Anything other than that, I guess, in that room would not be okay, just like the market. I go to the market, I go different places that I've had to go to, and even the liquor store, and they have police and other people that don't allow more than a certain amount of people into those locations. So if we want to have a limit of four, then people know that if there's four people there, no one else can get in. But I don't feel as though we have the right to say, you can't come, and you can't be a part of this in person, because that's their right.
Alderman Gathright, you can't limit people. You either have to have it all or none.
You absolutely, you absolutely can, because the governor has stated that how many people could be in different locations. So you absolutely can, because he did 17 and 17A. So there is, even, this is, you know, we're basically a necessity, because you're part of the government, basically. So you absolutely can restrict how many people can be in your presence.
Anyone else care to weigh in? Alderman, Attorney Bolton?
There's a procedure by which the open meeting requirement of allowing everyone to come in who wishes to come in can be waived and avoided. There is only one way to do that. That's why this telephone in with an alternative means of communicating any difficulty with hearing. That is the only exception to the open meeting requirement. It would absolutely be an illegal meeting to let the first four people in and exclude the rest. Anyone who participated in such a meeting would be subject to civil penalty, would be subject to being ordered to take remedial education on the right to know. There is no doubt at all in my mind that we can either have fully open meeting, or we can comply with the governor's directive that waives that open meeting requirement. But you cannot have half and half and allow some people in and some people not.
Alderwoman Kelly?
If I could ask a question through you to Attorney Bolton?
Absolutely.
So my question is, I know we're talking right now about our, our board and the provisions around that, but my question is, how do we handle public comment? Like you were saying, we have to have those hearings. Are we in violation of the orders of the governor if we have our budget hearing and there's 100 people in the room? Is there, I don't know that we've been given any guidance on that, but I'm just thinking ahead.
We've been given no guidance on that. Right now, it is to be catched on too. We have to have a public hearing, and we're not supposed to have gatherings of more than 10 people.
Okay.
I have some hope that the governor will weigh in further on these issues.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Alderman Cleese?
Thank you. I just want to clarify, ordinance number 16, that was the one that limited to 10, I'm trying to read this on a very tiny screen, so I apologize. It says, "Schedule gatherings of 10 people or more for social, spiritual, recreational activities, including but not limited to community, civic, public, leisure, faith-based, or sporting events, parades, concerts, festivals, blah, blah, blah." The prohibit, the prohibition does not apply to the general court, day-to-day operations of or for profit or nonprofit organizations, and state government, or gatherings for urgent medical purposes, such as blood drives, meetings of medicinal, medical personnel to discuss efforts to combat the COVID-19 pandemic. It doesn't speak of municipal government in that such. But would we, do you feel that because it doesn't say it in the either limited to or the prohibited from, that we would fall within that more than 10?
As near as practical, I think we should avoid gatherings of more than 10. I think it's, from a legal point of view, you're safer and you know you're on the right side of the law if you are not promoting gatherings of more than 10 people. Is there an argument that maybe we can stretch to have a public hearing and have more than 10 people? Yeah, there's a legal argument for that. Should we do it? I would say, no, we should not do it. We should be modeling the most appropriate behavior that we want our citizen and residents to observe. So hopefully, there will be some ability to conduct a public hearing telephonically or by means of written communication or something else before we face those issues.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes. Alderman Lou?
No, this is Jan.
Oh, Jan, I'm sorry. We haven't, I'm sorry, Jan.
No, I've been very quiet. Excuse me. I just want to bring up, emergency order number 17 requires the closure of nonessential business and requires Granite staters to stay at home. This isn't the business of people to come and speak to us if they can talk to us in an email or snail mail or a phone call. I would say that because, because of this order, that people should stay home and stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Schmidt. Anyone else care to weigh in?
President Welshire.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes, through you to Corporation Counsel, and forgive me if I, if I have this incorrect, but I do believe that the President has given us an order to limit public gatherings to 10 people as well. Does federal law supersede the state?
I'm not familiar with an order of the President that would apply to us. If one exists, I'd like to read it thoroughly before I put a pin on that. I know of, there are extraordinary powers granted to the President in times of great national distress, but generally speaking, the federal government can interfere in the day-to-day operations of localities. Normally, on issues that have a federal component, a federal law would supersede state law to the contrary. Beyond that, I can't really say. I do not know of a specific, no gatherings over 10 people that has been directed by the President to local municipalities.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? The motion, could the clerk please read the motion back? Do you have the motion?
I do, I believe.
Okay.
It was an amended motion.
Yes.
To suspend all public comment, and as the IT set up the criteria for the telephonic audio for if the public cannot hear the meetings, to be able to call in, and let all communications received be added to the agenda for acceptance and placed on file. Is that correct, Alderman Dowd?
Sounds good to me.
Any further comment? Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese? Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
No.
Alderwoman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Laws?
Sorry, yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Harry Gathright?
No.
Alderman Welshire?
Yes.
13 yeas and two nays.
And that motion carries. Do I have a motion? Alderman O'Brien?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn.
By roll call.
Yes, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Laws?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Harry Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Welshire?
Yes.
You have 16 yeas, zero nays.
That motion carries, and we are adjourned at 10:05 PM. Thank you, everyone.